We just come before you this morning and say thank you for grace and mercy. We thank you, Lord God, for the rain that you've sent to replenish the earth. And we ask that your Spirit would rain down on us to replenish our bodies, our minds, and our spirits. We just thank you for the opportunity to be here. We thank you that you've kept us alive to witness what you're doing at this point in time in the earthly realm. And we just ask that you would just lift those up who are weak, who are struggling from various situations and circumstances, and let them know that you're still God. And you are the one, Lord God, that can smooth every rough place and make every, exalt every valley and tear down every mountain in our lives. And we just thank you for that. We ask that you would be with us, give us wisdom as we carry out the business that you've entrusted us with and that the people have entrusted us to care about. We thank you now in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, sir.
We will go over our visitors for today. First, we will hear from Sheriff Derek Cunningham, County Engineer George Speak, Finance Director Cheryl Thomas, Parks and Recreation Director James Williams, Manager of Public Affairs Hannah Hawke, Riley Robey with Balch &amp; Bingham, Mike Dunn with Stiefel, and Clint Graves from Gilpin-Govan, Leslie York from Carp Deck, Ray Williams, Chief Probation Officer with the Youth Facility Court, Phil Bryant from Community Corrections, and Personnel Director Carmen Douglas. I don't believe anyone is here today from EMA because they are in the process, they're on their second week of COVID vaccinations. We'll go over the items on the agenda. First, we'll have a public hearing regarding an alcohol license application. We will consider a final pay application to J.J. Morley Enterprises for Annex III parking renovation. Consider a statement of work from Hurricane Electronics regarding work radio console replacements. Consider land use authorization for the Montgomery Metropolitan Cooperative Communications Direct District to use county-owned land for the construction of a replacement communications tower. Consider an alcohol license application for a special event for the Latino Festival. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies. Does anyone have anything to add there? Consider miscellaneous appropriations.
Is Commissioner Singleton on the line?
He is supposed to be. He had added an item for designated revenue appropriations.
I'll text him.
Yeah, I want to make sure he doesn't miss anything.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education. Are there any additions there? Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue. Commissioners, excuse me, Commissioner Singleton added a $5,000 appropriation to the Mount Zion AME Foundation Center. Are there any other additions? Consider budget change request number one for Parks and Recreation. Consider budget change request number one for the Revenue Commissioner's Office. Consider position fill requests for the District Attorney's Office for an Assistant Records Coordinator and a Receptionist Secretary. Consider position fill requests for Parks and Recreation Department for a Recreation Leader. Consider position fill requests for the Sheriff's Office for a Corrections Officer Corporal. Consider travel training requests for the youth facility. Consider position fill requests for the Engineering Department for a County Road Operator One and Operator Two. And those are all the items on the agenda. First, we'll hear from Sheriff Cunningham.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm smiling.
That's how you act like a preacher. You're trying to get.
Get everybody's attention? A preacher or a teacher? I don't know which one it is. We're paying attention. You got us.
All right, Florence, which one do you want me to do?
I believe the only items that you have are, you might want to comment on the alcohol license application, although that's in Commissioner Singleton's district.
I think Doug has summed it up last week. I pretty much gave it to him.
No, we all right with it. You all right with it.
Doug is on the line.
Yeah, we're fine. We had one complaint last meeting, but that was all we had, and we addressed it, so we're good.
All right, thank you. County Engineer George Speak.
Well, as I said, we opened bids on our county resurfacing various roads contract. It was on the 17th. And a low bidder was wild grass construction at $3,748,000. And we've got the funds budgeted to cover that. Federal Aid Exchange Fund, County Rebuild Alabama Funds.
Can I hear you, George?
We've got, we got the funds budgeted to cover the $3,748,000 for a resurfacing project. And that's Federal Aid Exchange, Rebuild Alabama, and 117 gasoline tax. And we're requesting approval toward that contract.
Which one is that?
It's number five. It's on the Thursday memo, I don't know if I have future agenda items.
Yeah, okay. All right, next agenda?
Yes, sir. Okay, on our, on the Woodard Road MPO project, it was in the state letting this past Friday. And wild grass was a low bidder on it also, a million fifteen thousand. So we'll have to work that through the state, so we should be able to start on it soon. And that's all we got.
Thank you, sir.
Finance Director Cheryl Thomas.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you hear me? I want to make sure. You have before you the memo that I have recommended employee cost of living adjustment. Just a little background on that. When the budget process began last June into July, and we had to come up with a final budget by August for adoption in September, it was still too early to know what was going to happen with COVID and the effect on revenues, so we did not include in the 2021 budget an employee merit increase, but discussed that we would look at doing one during the year, depending how the revenue trends. The 2020 year end still had an increase of over, I think, 3% in sales tax revenue. The majority of our revenue were 40%. And 2021 is trending 8% above. And that, along with the expenses that we've been able to reduce, I recommend that we do put the COLA in effective April 1st. There's a lot of reasons to do it. I couldn't really think of a reason not to do it. And the cost kind of equates what we would have done with a merit. The other thing on it is we, Personnel is currently looking at a pay plan study. If the pay plan study goes in, whatever that increase is, this 3%, gets the pay plan that much closer to what we might do on that. And just a little bit of a history, the last time we had a, across the board, COLA was 10-114. We had a pay, we had a pay plan increase 10-115, a little bit of adjustment. Just making sure, is that all right? In 19, and the state has had a couple of COLAs in their pay plans since we have. And I just think overall, it's getting the pay plan, you know, where it should be also. Any questions?
End of discussion?
Cheryl's been talking about this for quite some time, and I don't have any objections to her recommendation.
Dan?
No, I'm fine with it. No objection. Yeah, I'm fine. I'm fine with it, too.
Yes, sir. No problems. Okay. No questions.
Thanks.
I think this is a good time to show our employees that we appreciate them through the good times, through the hard times, because they've been immaculate. And I want to thank you for keeping a good record and keeping us out of trouble. You've done a great job. So put it on the next agenda.
Thanks.
Parks and Director James Williams regarding item number six. And I think Commissioner Singleton is going to chime in on this one, too.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you hear me? I've come before you this morning to make a recommendation to consider the renaming of one of our county parks, the Pine Level Park, which is located off of 231, roughly 10-acre park. This park is a little unique. It's roughly 60% of it is pine trees, and then it opens up into green space. So over the years, Mr. Sykes has helped out with the maintenance, has volunteered his time, service, and machinery. So what I would like to do is make a recommendation on renaming the park to James Sykes Park. Mr. Singleton, do you want to kind of comment on that?
Yeah, I do. You know, Mr. Sykes has took it off, not anybody asking to do it, he just did it on his own for the community. He went down and removed all the trees, all the brush, the dead trees, limbs on the fence. He cleans it up where it's so nice now, with people down there that they can walk and not have to worry about, you know, snakes or whatever else could get to them. He did a remarkable job. He probably spent, if he had the place of mind, probably been $25,000, $30,000 just to clean all of that up and haul it off. So I agree with James, and I hope my fellow commissioners will agree with us that I think it'd be an honor to name that after Mr. Sykes. He's had some minor health problems that he's addressed, but he's getting on up there in age, and I think it'd be just very fitting to name that park the James Sykes Park.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I don't know Mr. Sykes, and I'm sure that he perhaps have, you know, earned some distinction as it relates to what Commissioner Singleton talks about in terms of his work and his monies and time that he's volunteered. I was hoping at some point we could get a written policy that governs renaming of parks and how we perceive with that. I know there's some, there's some information out there that I think we could use as a template to develop some policies for renaming parks. And perhaps in conjunction with that, maybe have a public hearing just to see how the public feels about it, not to disagree with Commissioner Singleton. But I think we ought to have a written policy about renaming of parks. And I thought we mentioned that during the previous discussion, and hopefully we might want to visit, visit that. Please.
Commissioner Sank, I think you kind of hit something, a point that I made a note of last week and did an FYI to the rec board as far as on our next meeting. That's something that we would discuss, and I would present them with something as far as policy and procedure, and then bring it back to the commissioners, just to see what y'all say. But we do have parks that have been named in the past, and I've done research, and I couldn't find anything. I think La Pine Park is now named Wayne Ezener Park, Grady Park is Sam Wingard. So we've done it in the past, but I have not found any information as far as what you just mentioned on policies and procedures.
Just moving forward, I think it would be nice to, to have a policy governing that other counties across the country have written policies for renaming and the criteria that has to be met, so hopefully we can look at that here in Montgomery.
Okay. So anybody else want to discuss this, or can we move and take that under consideration? Not under consideration, but put it on the next agenda?
I'm fine with the next agenda.
All right. All right.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Hannah Hawke.
Good morning. We have, the commission has been requested to send a request to President Biden to award the Presidential Medal of Freedom to Attorney Fred Gray. And so we also have a resolution showing that support, and so that is before you. Thank you.
So would that resolution be approved in the formal session?
Yes, I believe you will have to do a waive rules item.
Okay, any problem waiving rules for that resolution?
No, sir.
Okay. No objection. Okay, all right.
No objection.
Next, we're going to hear from Mike Dunn with Stiefel and Clint Graves from Gilpin-Govan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hear me okay? Good. Last time I was here in January, we talked about refunding bond issue to refinance some of your 2010, 12, and 14 outstanding bonds. So since that meeting, we have prepared the sale. We have an official statement that's in the marketplace with investors. We have received affirmation of the ratings from Moody's and S&amp;P. And with your direction, we are ready to sell bonds as soon as tomorrow. This is a refunding for savings. Interest rates are lower, so the estimated savings from the refunding is about $1.5 million. The structure, the financing will be done where we deliver, a large part of that is cash at closing that you can use for projects, and some of it will be in annual savings. About $1.3 million in cash at closing and a couple hundred thousand dollars in savings over time. Interest rates, we are in a rising interest rate market. Since we were here in January, rates are up about 40 basis points. They've gone up about 20 basis points in the last week, but we're still in a favorable environment. From a historical standpoint, rates are about 50 basis points lower than they have been over the last three years on average, but we're up from where we were a few months ago, and I think you're probably aware of that. The refinancing estimates and all-in interest rate of about 1.35%. That's compared to about 4.4% of the bonds that we are refinancing. We're not extending the debt. It's being advertised over the same period of time. It's relatively short-term debt. This all pays off by 2029. Just a few notes from the rating agency comments. You are rated by both Moody's and S&amp;P. The Moody's rating is AA1, which is one notch short of AAA. The S&amp;P rating is AA. Some of the comments from the rating agencies as it relates to the county is very strong financing, stable performance, strong management with good policies and procedures, strong budgetary performance, high liquidity, moderate debt. So very complimentary by the rating agencies. Of course, they rated you last year when we did the Whitewater transaction. No new news really since then, but just another affirmation of the strong financing and budgeting and management of the county. Clint's here just to mention about the legalities of it. You have a resolution in your package that'll be voted on at the next meeting. So when, when we come back in two weeks, we would have expected to have sold the bonds and be able to report final results to you, and at that point, get an approval on the resolution that Clint has.
Thank you. The resolution before you that we are introducing today will authorize the issuance of the general obligation refunding warrants, Series 2021 A and B. It will also call for redemption, the county's series, the outstanding Series 2010 A warrants, the Series 2012 Public Building Authority warrants, and the Series 2014 Public Building Authority warrants the county's obligated for under lease obligations. The resolution will also approve the offering documents, the official statement, preliminary official statement that Mike discussed. It will approve a registrar agreement and an escrow agreement, both the region's bank, who will serve as the registrar and the escrow trustee for the Series 2021 warrants. And then finally, it will also approve a disclosure dissemination agent agreement, which is in agreement with the dissemination agent, will be DAC LLC in this instance, who will help the county with its continuing disclosure obligations for the Series 2021 warrants. When we come back at the next meeting, the resolution will be filled in with the numbers from the sale of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, having been in my first life in this business, I reviewed all the documents that they've been sent to me over the last several months. They are in order, and they're perfectly legal. And so from a legal standpoint, we're okay to go ahead.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that'll be next agenda?
Yes.
We're going to go on to Leslie York from Carp Deck. She will be discussing items eight and nine.
Good morning. As y'all probably know, Carp Deck works in the background, oftentimes on projects that we just come before you at certain milestones to kind of give you an update, to get you approved, any information that needs to have action taken. So we, for the month of March, have three very important projects that we're working on. One is the closeout of the Eastwood Villa Housing Rehab Grant. You should have in your packet some information on that project that gives you how many houses we rehabbed, which was 18, the number of beneficiaries, and also, we included some information based on our weatherization program coming along and partnering with us on three of those houses. So if you have any questions on that, I will be glad to answer any. What we will be doing is asking for a public hearing to be held prior to the meeting on the 16th, so that we can inform all of the residents of the outcome of the project, as well as to talk about potential projects for 2021 funds. Commissioner Sanki had contacted me about the 2021 program, and I had sent the brochure that we typically hand out at those meetings. It has a little bit of information in there. One thing to point out for that project is that the state has gone up on the grant ceiling, so now the county would be eligible for $400,000 in grant money. So again, that public hearing that we would like to hold on the 16th will talk about that, give citizens an opportunity to provide some potential projects that the commission may want to consider.
I got, I got just one question. I was looking, looking at the final report here, and I noticed it was, and I don't know what page this is, it looked like it might be the first page, beneficiaries estimated in the application, wait a minute, that's not it, number of beneficiaries actually assisted, 40, and then number of households actually assisted, 18. What's the difference? I mean, are you counting the individuals inside of the household?
Yes, we are. And ADECA has a policy in the CDBG program that you can locally amend a grant, which means really the commission would just provide a letter to them saying that we would like to reduce the number of overall beneficiaries down to 40. We thought we would have 45, so it was estimated in the application, but we had quite a few single household elderly beneficiaries, so that number was a little bit lower than anticipated. But it's within their guidelines, so we can just submit a letter signed by the chairman, you know, stating that we fall in line with that policy letter and would like to inform them that we're going to reduce that number. Anything else on that particular?
In terms of the public hearing, Mr. Chairman, Leslie, how are we going to disseminate information so, to make the public aware of the hearing? Because I know oftentimes we have these hearings and nobody shows up, and I'm thinking maybe it's maybe the way we disseminate information to inform the public.
And Tammy Nix and I had had a follow-up conversation on where we could post notices. One of the thoughts was to put them up at the different probate offices around the county. We can run the notice in the newspaper if the commission would like. Typically with this program, that's not required. I'm not really sure how many people read the paper these days. We can definitely put it on the county's website. Any other locations that y'all feel like, you know, would be important places to try and, because again, this program does benefit low and moderate income populations. So, you know, we will be focusing on areas in the county that meet that qualification.
Ms. Jim?
How's it worked out? How do you identify applicants? How do you get them?
There's a couple of different things, I think, to understand. Like with the housing rehab, 100% of the beneficiaries have to meet the low mod requirement. With other infrastructure-type projects, 51% have to meet that. So typically, we would go out and do an income survey, a door-to-door survey, gathering that information. So whatever area was determined, you know, as your project area, we would have to have at least 80% responses in that project area. And then 51% has to meet the low mod requirement.
I think, I think it'd be a good idea to expand the way we advertise it, the way we get the word out, definitely on our, on our website and.
Other social media?
Yes.
And that particular application won't be due until, I believe it's July 2nd, so we've got some time in here to discuss some of that as well. We could have a follow-up meeting if you felt like we needed to, but the one on the 16th will kind of cover the bases. We like to include as many of the CDBG programs in one meeting as possible, because as y'all say, it is difficult to get people to, to come. So if we hit all of them at once, that's generally a, a good way.
Oh, I'm not, Commissioner Sank is concerned about people attending the public hearing. I'm concerned with people knowing about the program and getting the service.
No, that's, that's what I'm getting there, Commissioner Harris.
People, they don't have to come to the meeting to get that.
Yeah, well, that's, that's why we're talking, so we can find out how best to get the information to them. No, I'm not trying to crowd, particularly at this point in time during the pandemic. I'm not trying to crowd this facility, but I do, and thank you for the clarification. That's what I'm concerned about, the information.
Right, and we can always put in the notice or follow-up notices to go to the Right, and we can always put in the notice or follow-up notices to go to the county's website for more information on the particular programs. One thing too, I wanted to mention, since they increased that grant ceiling, they also did in the ED, Economic Development Fund as well. So if you have anything this year that you would like to consider for economic development, that maximum ceiling amount is $400,000. So, it doubled. It was 200, now it's 400. So that's something just to kinda keep in mind for those projects as well.
All of this is outside of the city limits?
Yes. Okay, so the other topic then that you have before you is for the CDBGCV fund. It's the newly established coronavirus category, where the state has allocated a certain dollar amount to all counties, who then have to partner or at least get agreement from the majority of the municipalities in their county to move forward on a project. So Montgomery County has been awarded $300,000, supposed to go toward coronavirus relief-type programs. So we have discussed with Florence, and I believe she's probably communicated with y'all, that this application be used for the Montgomery Food Bank as well as Salvation Army. So that public hearing on the 16th will cover that as well. There is no match with that, but again, the money does need to be spent on beneficiaries in the unincorporated, unincorporated areas. So you've got a map, which you may find kinda helpful, that breaks down, yes, 11 by 17, breaks down for you by census tracts, the income categories included. So what we will do is work with the food bank and the Salvation Army to distribute additional food in those areas. I think we have seven, mostly church sites, but food bank recipients that we will target. Pike Road is on board with this project as well. So on, at your March 16th meeting, you will have a resolution for you to approve on submission of this application. There is a memorandum of understanding in there, which will be executed by the county and the town. Again, just showing their support, and we will be coordinating with the food bank and Salvation Army on how to make sure that the proper documentation is provided for beneficiaries of the, the grant fund.
So we'll get report back on how, how many people were reached and all that?
Yes. And their system, Greg Clark, our director, has communicated with the food bank. Their system is well-equipped to show designation of those food items, food boxes, meals, or whatever.
Well, these just the two, two, how did you, how did you go about choosing just two? I can understand why you picked these two, but just two.
The areas of interest that the commission had expressed were food programs, homelessness, and rental assistance. So with the rental assistance program rolling out with separate funding, we identified two agencies that checked all the boxes with the ADECA requirements.
I was thinking about Restore and all that. I mean, that's a good thought. Can it, can it be revised other than two?
Yes, sir. I mean, that, we were trying to, since it's one pool of money, trying to make it cohesive, and you will see again that there are like seven different locations that will benefit, so it's not just those two agencies themselves. It will expand out, you know, into all of the other sites that they assist.
I, I, I saw that. I was, we, we get these organizations that do a lot of this work, and they come down here and they're, they're, I don't know if they're being supported by the food bank or not. The one that comes to mind is Restore.
Which one?
Restore. I don't know if they're supported by the food bank, but they're always coming down here and they're sure, and they need stuff. So I, 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 I don't, I don't recall seeing that on, as one of the...
If y'all will get with Florence on any other specific agencies that you would like to try and target, that is definitely possible, whether, whether they go through the food bank or whether we set aside separately for the...
If they're on the food bank list, fine. And I, food bank's an excellent choice, because they service most, most of these nonprofits around here, but I don't know that this one is. I don't know.
We can find out before the 16th, yeah?
Yeah.
These churches, Leslie, how did they get to be designated as area food bank? The churches that you have highlighted on here?
You know, I am honestly not sure what their program requirements are for the food bank. I know that they do have to make sure that their services are received from low and moderate income households. They have, you know, their standards that, that they have to meet as well. I, I apologize, I don't know specifically how each one gets tied back.
I know we have a number of churches in Flatwoods in that area, in Madison Park, and I don't see any of them, so I need to find...
They may, these may just be the places where they have like a food pantry on site.
Okay.
Well, no, no, because my church has one. Like they do it every Wednesday, but there's a fee that comes along with it. So those churches that you probably see, they're paying so much, not a, not a big amount, they're paying for some food, so many pounds of food.
That they're purchasing?
Yeah, they're purchasing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, yeah, just if y'all will get additional questions or information to Florence, and we will follow up and see, you know, how best to make sure we target everyone you would like to see benefit from this.
So can both those items go on the next agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
That all? Okay, thank y'all.
We have, that's all.
Okay, yeah, if you have any questions, please, y'all, y'all are always free to call us directly if you need to about any of this.
We have two more waive rule items that we need to discuss before the formal session. Riley Robey is up next. We had hoped that Leslie Sanders would be able to join us, but she's not going to be able to get here.
Good morning, commissioners. This matter relates to the Whitewater Park project, which this commission's wellware is being developed by the Montgomery County Community Cooperative District. As it stands today, we are targeting a spring 2023 opening for the Whitewater Park project. The item before the commission today for which we are requesting that rules be waived and the requested resolution adopted asks this commission to approve an application that was submitted seeking to form a local redevelopment authority, which is a creature of state law that was signed by Governor Ivey last legislative session and that was supported by Montgomery County. Once the local redevelopment authority is formed, we will bring it into the fold, if you will, of the Montgomery County Community Cooperative District because of some of the benefits that that legislation authorizes to the Whitewater Park project. Among other items, it, it will allow the cooperative district, through the local redevelopment authority, to be exempt from the competitive bid laws, which is of interest to the cooperative district in conjunction with the Whitewater Park project, because it will enable the cooperative district to, we believe, utilize more minority contractors to participate in this project. We're, we're asking that this, that the rules be waived in this item be approved today because we have on the timeline in the near, next four weeks, some workshops that are going to be targeting, you know, minority contractors to make them aware of opportunities for participating in this exciting project for our community here. And I'm happy to address any specific questions that the commissioners may have with regard to this request, but we would ask that the commission consider waiving rules and approve the application that was submitted seeking to approve formation of the new local redevelopment authority.
Chairman, I have no objection.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I spoke with Mr. Robey a couple of weeks ago in reference to the project. I was hoping to get some data in terms of where we were with the project, any type of expenses that we've incurred already, who the participants were, and I'm not sure where we are on that. In addition, I'm just concerned that communication, this is me now talking, I'm not speaking for anyone other than myself and my constituents, because communication regarding this has not been what I think it ought to be. If you have a project of this magnitude and you're certainly interested in instituting some change that's gonna benefit all the citizens, it seemed to me that should be more communication, which I don't think has taken place yet. And so, I, I'm concerned about that as well. And so, all of us being members of the team, we should at least have some communication with those people who are making decisions, such as Ms. Sanders. I spoke with her last night, very pleasant, and she understood my concerns, and Mr. Robey. And so, I don't think, you know, one or two commissioners meeting to discuss this project really served the entire community well. I represent some 44,000 constituents. We're talking about $37 million. I'm sure some of that money is coming from those who I represent, and I just think we should have more communication as it relates to this. And so, for that reason, since the communication has not been what I think it ought to be, and I don't know what the metrics are, first of all, let me just say this, I'm certainly happy, excited that we are looking for ways to include more minorities. That's very, very important as we move forward here in Montgomery County. But the metrics, I mean, what are the goals, objectives, are they outlined, and what metrics will we be employing to make sure that we meet those goals and objectives? And so for, for one reason, lack of communication regarding the project of this magnitude, I don't feel comfortable waiving rules at this time. I don't see why we can't move it to the next meeting, and I would have had an opportunity to speak, hopefully with you, Mr. Robey, as well as Ms. Sanders about this. And I understand the urgency, but it perhaps should have been on the agenda, maybe last meeting if it was that urgent. And so, I don't wanna be argumentative today, but I hope that you do understand my concerns.
I think you need to be talking to the commission.
Chairman Dean, may I speak up?
I listen to you speak.
Chairman Dean, may I?
Doug, 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 let me say what I need to say. Let me say what I need to say, Doug, you after that. First of all, Commissioner Sankey, I don't think any of us three commissioners have gone to any one of these meetings. There's only one person that has gone to the meetings, that's because he goes to meetings, he has time to go to the meetings, he wasn't invited to the meetings, and that's Commissioner Singleton, okay? So, you're alleging that one or two, only one person has gone to those meetings, and he's even not a member of the authority. But he go because he's concerned, and it could be open to you, you can go anytime you get ready, if you got time to go. But we've had too many stalemates trying to get this stuff done. First it was the Salvation Army, we got all that stuff, it was the city, and for us to hold up a project of this magnitude because you feel a certain way, that's not fair to the people that you represent, and not fair to the people the rest of us represent. You are one fifth of the group. And, but you know, I don't know why it's that you think that people are doing things underhanded or whatever. See, the person that you, the person that you could talk to all the time, rather than the bother of Mr. Robey or Ms. Sanders, is the person that represents us on the authority.
Yes, sir.
That's Florence Cotton.
And again...
And then all of us had an opportunity to put on the authority who we believe...
Yes, sir.
That had our vision. We just put it about on there. We gave a lot of good thought to that. So I wish you would consider and let's move forward.
There hadn't been any clarity. Again, we're gonna move forward, because I'm trying to be in order here. But in any event, even the meetings, the time and so forth have been somewhat vague, so I don't want to, to continue, you know, I certainly don't want to intend to argue about it. I know, I know, and I, I'm not accusing anyone of having any maybe special privileges that I don't have, but I do think that communication could be better as it relates to this. And so, moving forward, I'm, I'm not going to be in favor of waiving the rules today, and that's not me trying to be difficult to get along with, but I need some additional information, and Ms. Sanders has agreed to meet with me to discuss that, and so, I'm, I'm not going to vote to waive the rules today.
Mr. Chairman, if I may respond to a comment that Commissioner Sankey made, on behalf of the Montgomery County Community Cooperative District, which, which we represent in connection with this project, I don't want the commission or anyone else in earshot today to be of the mistaken impression that the action that the cooperative district has taken today, or not, before today, has been under some type of cloak of secrecy. I mean, the truth is, the meetings that the cooperative district have held today have been public meetings after required public notice has been posted, and in many instances, these meetings have been attended by media. And I just think it's important, in connection with the significance of this project to our community, that it not be believed by some that what is occurring here is, is not without appropriate opportunity for public input.
Mr. Robey, can we, if we waive rules, what's, what effect is gonna have if we have to, if we, if we don't waive rules and we have to put it on the next agenda? What, what effect would it have on our project, you know?
Commissioner Harris, simply delay, and, and as we really remain on a tight timeframe to target an opening, which the county has asked us to in the spring of 2023, each day, each week, each month that passes by without us being able to proceed to secure the contractors needed for this project, just pushes out farther, possibly pushes out farther, that targeted opening deadline.
Costs more money, potentially.
Thank you.
He, he asked you, Mr. Robey, that, I'm sorry, you may have not have heard him. He, he wants to, I mean, Mr. Harris is wondering if it's costing more money to delay. That's, I think that was his question. Did you respond to that?
Is it costing more money to delay? It's costing time to delay.
Oh, yes, sir. Okay.
And time is money.
That, that was his question.
I know, I thought that was...
You answered my question, right?
Okay, all right, very good. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, Chairman Dean, may I speak?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I chaired the last cooperative district meeting. I think it was the afternoon of the last county commission meeting, or it was a Thursday after the county commission meeting, and I took notes and I sent a briefing to, I, I talked to every one of the commissioners and told them about this authority at that time. I told them about every plan, everything that was happening in that commission, cooperative district meeting. So, I don't know what else I can do as far as providing information. I provided to Commissioner Harris, Commissioner Walker, Chairman Dean, and Commissioner Sankey. I told them the same thing, exactly what Riley's talking about today, so I don't know how I can communicate any better, but I will try in the future. But I, again, this, this not only affects this project, it affects, I still think the project started on time, it affects employment, it affects the west side of Montgomery, and all the things we're trying to do to get this project moving forward, and I hope that Commissioner Sankey will consider that.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to, to go on record as saying that, that I have been fully informed. I've known when the meetings are, I've had opportunities to attend the cooperative district meetings if I so choose, and as Commissioner Singleton said, he's called me numerous times to make sure I'm informed. I've talked to Florence. Anytime I have questions, I can ask Florence. I certainly don't feel hesitant, if I need to, to reach out to Mr. Robey or Mrs. Sanders and ask them questions. They're all at our disposal, because we are all a team, and anytime I've had questions, anytime I've had concerns, I've simply reached out and the communication has been flawless.
Will you stand in by now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Won't be waiving rules on that. What's next?
So this will go on the next agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
And I would encourage anyone who has questions or concerns between now and the next meeting to please ask those questions.
We have one, one more waiver rule item, consider a board member appointment to the Pike Road Volunteer Fire Protection Authority.
I have no objection.
I have no objection.
No objections.
No, sir. Commissioner Singleton did speak with me about that.
Okay.
All right. All right, it's 10 o'clock. Do you want to?
Are we finished?
We're going to need to come back after the formal session.
Well, we're going to take a three-minute break.
A three-minute break, and then we will come back to the formal session. All right, we will go back to our information session items. Item number three is actually a matter for the sheriff's office, a bid award to SANS Now to provide and install graphics and lettering on Montgomery County vehicles. Consider a final pay application to Keenum Construction Company doing business as Southern Preservation Systems for the Scott Street parking deck restoration.
Call item number.
It's item number 10, I'm sorry.
Next agenda.
Consider a final pay application to WS Newels &amp; Sons for Old Selma Road Park.
Next agenda.
Item number 12 is an inmate excess medical policy renewal with catastrophic inmate medical insurance administered by Hunt Insurance Group. I believe. Consider the county levies for alcohol licensing for 2021, 2022.
Next agenda.
Consider a bid award to Armstrong Relocation for the delivery setup and retrieval of election equipment and moving services for the election center.
Next agenda.
Consider a board member appointment to the Montgomery Area Mental Health Authority.
Who is it?
Who's the partner was that? I don't think it was mine.
Albert Perkins. Albert Perkins term is expiring. Albert Perkins.
Who's partner was that?
It does not say.
It don't say.
It's not mine.
Was he willing to serve?
North Moy Drive. Moy Drive, well, that is, it's a 36109. It looks like my district, but I've already, my appointment is Yolanda Tyree.
Mine is there.
But they don't have to live in the district to have been appointed by the commissioner.
I can get some more information on this and have it at the next meeting.
See if he's relevant, I'm sure.
Okay.
Next is a board member appointment to the North Montgomery Volunteer Fire Protection Authority.
Yes, you're thinking, right?
Yes, sir. I mean, who is that? Is there a vacancy there being created?
The first one.
Anthony Rayburn. Rayburn will expire.
Today.
Today?
Yesterday, yeah, today. Yesterday.
I didn't get that. Can I get back with you on that, Florence?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Usually people seem to love it and requesting what they want.
I think this was included because the term had expired and we had not heard from them, so it was an opportunity to discuss it.
It looks like there's a lot of turnover in addition to Mr. Rayburn.
Yes, and if I can chime in a little bit on this, I'm familiar with them and he has been a good member in the past.
Okay, I'll give him a call.
Then we have number 17 is a board member appointment to the Pentlala Water and Fire Protection Authority.
Yeah, that's reappointed, that's it. Reappointed. Next agenda.
Next, under our personnel action items is consider hiring a court therapist, too, at a pay grade A10, step three, for the Montgomery County Youth Facility Court. Mr. Williams is here if you have questions for him.
Next agenda.
Next agenda. Item number 19 is an unbudgeted position fill request for community corrections. Mr. Bryant is here if you have any questions.
I'd just like to hear the difference between those two jobs, if you don't mind.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The difference is, one of them is a officer position, and it requires them to go through the academy, and the other one doesn't.
So, they're still doing casework?
They do casework, but the one that's the technician position can't go out and do home visits and make arrests.
How many checks do you have?
None as of right now. Well, I take that back, we have one. But that particular person basically runs our drug lab.
And then, how many are you going to have making field checks?
It'd be four. We have four.
And then, aren't you proposing to change one of those over to a tech?
Right, but that one that I'm changing over to a tech will basically be doing the ROR program, and then we'll be doing the county probation.
Okay. It's going to save us money?
About $17,000.
So, how many current positions do you have for community corrections technician?
One. We just have one right now.
So, you only have, this is an unbudgeted position?
Right.
So, you only have one position on your books?
Right.
And you want to add two more?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, that took care of items 19 and 20. Item number 21 is an unbudgeted position fill request for the Personnel Department. Item 22 is to consider hiring a plumber at a pay grade S10, step eight, for support services. That position was advertised in October, and we've only had one applicant. The position is in the budget at a higher step, so this will actually generate a savings of about $2,600.
Okay.
Under our general information items, we have the proposed memorandum of agreement with the City of Montgomery and the Moore-Ziegler Group.
We're going to carry that on.
We also have a proposed job description for a county attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I'd request that we move that, we place that county attorney job description on the next agenda for consideration.
I didn't, I intended to talk to you about the job description. This seems to me there should be at least a minimum practice requirement if we're going to have all these expectations of a candidate. And I notice in the education experience and qualifications, it makes no mention. You could have somebody who just passed the bar yesterday come in here and apply for the job and get hired. So, I think, I think at the very minimum, that should be tweaked. Level of experience, the number of years, we can decide on that. I apologize for not getting to you, getting with you before this meeting, because that was, that was, that was one of my concerns with the, with this job description.
State your concern again, Commissioner Harris.
With all the responsibilities that we, and the expectations we have for this job, I think there should be a minimum experience as an attorney requirement.
What would you suggest as the minimum?
To qualify, in, I don't know, minimum five years.
As a practicing attorney?
Right. With, with, I think we talk about the type of experience we expect them to have. If you really want to get somebody good in this position, you're going to have to have somebody that's been practicing, somebody familiar, that's familiar with the type of law that we expect them to do, and some familiarity with the courtroom.
I don't have an objection to a minimum years' practice, if no one else has a concern about that. This is a draft document, and it still has to go before the Personnel Board. I still encourage the commission to put this on our next agenda so we can move this very tedious process forward. We've had this document, everybody's had it in hand for at least six weeks. I don't have an objection to adding a five-year stipulation. Is that a reasonable, in your research, Florence? But I do ask that we put this on the next agenda.
So, what are we approving? Because she hasn't completed her research. The research that I requested is still ongoing. So, what are we, what are you asking us to do just to approve this job description?
So, it can then move to the Personnel Board, correct? That's the next.
Well, I think that we would have to, and Carmen might want to speak to this, we would have to, I think we need to work with Personnel on all of the details of the job description. For example, we have a salary range, some choices, maybe if you all could direct us to move forward with finalizing a job description. And I feel like this is not a final draft of a job description, and so I don't really know what the process would be to come back and change the job description.
I mean, I think we've had the conversation. I'm agreeable with the concept and what we're trying to do, but I don't, I don't understand what, why we need to act on this right now if we're going to still, if it's still living document, the one that we haven't finalized yet. I think after we put our ideas together, we should probably give it to the Personnel Department, let them work it through, and then bring it back to us.
They have been working, they are familiar with this process.
I mean, once we get it done, then they can, they can evaluate it in terms of the things that Personnel have to do, salaries and all that, all that kind of stuff. But we've got to have a completed job description. I think, I think this is still, still fluid, still living. I don't know, I mean, I don't know why we.
Carmen, are you on the call?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, and my understanding is, what the commission needs to do is act today in order to allow the Personnel Board to create the job. So, does that action require a finalized description? What exactly do we need to do today to act to get y'all to create this job?
What we would need to do, first of all, good morning, everyone. What you would need to do is just to allow us to look at creating a new position for the county commission. And once you do that, then we'll go through all the process of creating the job description in conjunction with the subject matter experts. Once we get the job, proposed job description created, then we'll present it back to whoever the position will report to. So, you all will decide, or in conjunction with the subject matter experts, who the position will report to, and then the commission would vote on whether or not to create the position.
So, Mr. Chairman, my recommendation is that we, as a commission, give the Personnel Board the authority to begin to create this position. So, that's what we're asking to be put on the next agenda. Our authority to the Personnel Board to create this new position.
I'm agreeable to that.
Okay, good.
Is that, is that correct, Carmen? Is that what we need to vote on at the next meeting?
Yes, that's perfect. And then, we can just start the process of creating the job.
Thank you, Carmen. That's my recommendation.
Okay.
Correct. That covers all the items that were considered in the briefing memo. The other item that we need to address, a plan going forward, is the rental assistance program, the documents that shared with you over the weekend.
Mr. Chairman, I got a chance to look at that. I think Deborah told me, was in the house last night, and I spent half the night looking at it. I got, I saw the Bosch proposal and the Horn proposal, and there was another tech. I got through the community action proposals, and I didn't get through United Way's proposal. I think there might have been another one, but I.
There was one at your place that came in last night from the Mid-Alabama Coalition for Homeless.
So, I mean, I'd like to look at them all. There were some pretty, pretty good proposals. My concern, and I've shared this with Florence, my concern is that I want this program to, I don't want this program to be administered on too high a level. I'd like to see, I know that under the program, both tenants and landlords can apply. I'd like to see, I wouldn't want a program where the only person, the only entities that get noticed are going to be the landlords, and they're the ones that are doing all the applying. I want to make sure that the information is made available to individuals so that they can make applications and they can comment on the, on the, I mean, this is an opportunity also for them to also make a comment on their living facilities. A lot of these landlords are living up to their end of the deal, but they want to get paid. So, I'd like to see, make sure that we're not on that higher level. Most of these proposals, we're talking about internet portals and all this, these people can barely pay, can't pay their rent, I doubt if they can pay spectrum to keep their internet up. So, I want to make sure that whoever we choose to administer this program has a connection to the community, to the extent that they know the people that really need this help, and know how to reach them, and know how to make it available, and let them know about it. And that's my concern. Now, we, I'm going to go with, of course, I'm going to go with the majority, whatever we decide to do. And they're all very good applicants, but some of them were real high-level in the things that they were talking about, and the way that they were talking about getting things done.
Okay. Comments?
Mr. Chairman, I feel that this is a significant amount of funding that obviously we take very seriously. That said, I do want somebody that has had experience doing this level of work with this volume of dollars, who has the database and the ability to manage a website that will help these individuals. I think we can have that level of experience coupled with perhaps a more localized, on the ground here in Montgomery, partner or partners. Based on everything I've seen, there are some that I feel comfortable with and some that I don't feel comfortable with. But we can certainly work out some level of partnership to ensure that the folks on the ground, the folks in the most need are aided in this process.
Okay. Commissioner Shinkie?
Well, we certainly need some level of sophistication and technology in terms of administering the program. But I do think we need to work with some of the groups who have been dealing with this before the money got here. I know that Central Alabama Coalition for the Homeless have been doing a lot to educate people on how to avoid being homeless. They've helped the homeless, and I think they have the expertise to provide some of the case management services. Community Action has been engaged as well. So, we definitely want to include some of those who've been working with the people on a day-to-day basis while we also introduce a level of sophistication as it relates to technology. But we need to make sure that we have some type of happy medium.
I agree with everything that the three of you said. I, I agree with the, with everything that the three of you have said. When I was talking to Florence when we, this first came up, I was telling her that, uh, my concern is that I wanted people that usually don't have opportunities like this to get this opportunity, like Dan said, when you deal with a lot of high-level people and they go administer this, a lot of people they don't even reach. And still, you know, uh, it's buzz, it's a buzz. We got an email letting us know that it was coming down the pipe and, uh, we know that people will be watching who get this money or who elderly will get the money. We got, we got some advocates that, that are always looking for something that they can say we're not doing it. Don't say what we are doing, they say what we're not doing. And my other concern is that, I think we had a couple, Jackson, Mississippi, and some other posts like that, I, I just don't wanna see money that we have going to other counties, to other, other states, when we can do, we have a, a small group of people here in Montgomery, Alabama, we just got to take the time to reach out and see who, who can hold this, who can, who can manage this money. When people see $6 million, everybody get ready to say they can do the job. That's what we got to watch out for. $6 million that is never, it's new to us. We couldn't do it, but I'm sure like you all, it's like you said, running down and down there, we could put together a package that, uh, that everybody benefits. And it's not about us benefiting, but it's about the people that's in need, uh, that needs to benefit. And, uh, I know we've been saying that for the first month or whatever, 'cause we are not ready, that the state would be, uh, handling stuff like that. So, I, I, but I'm still concerned, even though it's a state money, I don't know what the people that we represent would be to get that money in time. We, we, we represent a special people. I mean, like I say, they gonna either complain about what you, they gonna always complain about what you're not doing and say they wouldn't inform. And, and this, it's, it's on the internet, it's everywhere now, that we get that money in the wrong assistance, where everybody are waiting to see what they can do. So, uh...
We've put a link on our website to the state's site to, for that application process and we'll be making that information available so that those who choose to, to go ahead and get on board now can. We've gotten a lot of calls already. Hannah has fielded many calls and, um, so I can, I can work some more before the next meeting. Would be happy to arrange opportunity for any of you to, to visit with representatives of each of these groups who have submitted applications. I, I think there's some opportunities to come up with some hybrid solutions involving our, our local people if...
I think hybrid might, might be the way to go because you, you, you know, I'm thinking about the person that's gonna come in and need somebody to sit down and help them fill out that application.
Absolutely.
You know? And I haven't seen, I didn't see that in some of the proposals, uh, and, and so maybe a hybrid, and I understand the need to make sure that we have a system that's accountable because we're gonna be responsible for anything that goes wrong. And I, I understand that need, believe me, but, but, but I understand the purpose and, and I understand, I know what my purpose is, what I'd like to see, the reason why I support it, I wanna make sure it gets to the right people, you know, and so, but that's, that's...
Yeah. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I, I, this has been a good conversation. We've got good information to chew on. We've got to make a wise but expeditious decision when it comes to these monies because people need this money and we don't wanna be sitting holding a bag that we could be distributing. So, whatever we need to do, whatever we individually need to do in the next two weeks to get comfortable with these proposals, the question, we, we cannot come back here in two weeks and have this same conversation. So, we need to get this to the point that we can move on it. Whatever we need to do to make that happen, we need to do it.
I agree.
So, are, yeah.
Agreed.
Yeah, well said.
So, what are we gonna do to make sure that that happens?
I only got two more for the reading, I'm, I'll be ready and they go, I, I, I'll talk to Florence about it, you know, she can share with y'all.
And then we will need to, somebody will need to make a suggestion and then that's gonna have to be put on the agenda. So, if we come back in two weeks and then we put something on the agenda, then it'll be another two weeks, or we can waive rules?
Well, we need to get it done.
We could, we could, we could waive rules next meeting.
I, I think the timing is critical.
It is critical.
I know, we need to get it done.
So, that, that means we can't come back next week and say we didn't have enough communication or information.
Right.
That onus is on us now.
It is.
Gotta be 65% spent by September, huh? So, we, we need to move.
Yeah.
Got to.
Okay. Everybody's agreeing?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, with that...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We got these pamphlets. This is, this is interesting, but it's, it's gonna put us in the same kinda shape. But this, this money would be, if we, if we were successful in gathering this, we could spend this inside of the city. It has economic development aspects to it and also has just planned out assistance to, to individuals. This would be funds that would be unlike the, the, what we were talking about this year. It would, this would be money we could spend.
Right, there's, there's, this is just general CDPG money.
And we've never, we've never applied for anything like this ever.
Uh, I believe so.
I'm interested, I'm interested in this, we can talk about it, but this is, and, and, and that way we can really, uh, create some partnerships and, and, and give ourselves the ability to take advantage of this when it comes about, 'cause there's a lot of people in this county that could use this money. And I hate to see it all go to Jefferson County and Mobile and Madison and we not get in.
I agree. Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved?
Second.
All them papers say aye.
Aye.